We'll call the regular meeting of the Upsher County Commission to order. We'll begin with a moment of silent meditation and prayer followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Amen?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This time we'll have the reading of the minutes of the May 3, 2012, Upsher County Regular Commission Meeting.
The county commission of Upsher County, West Virginia, held their regular meeting at the courthouse annex on Thursday, May 3, 2012, at 9:00 a.m. Donnie Tenny called the meeting to order. There were present Diantani Commissioner, Creed Pletcher Commissioner, J.C. Rafferty Commissioner, William Parker Administrator, and Jacqueline Dinklocker Secretary. The meeting began with a moment of silent meditation and prayer followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. All motions passed unanimously unless otherwise stated. After reading of the minutes on motion by Creed Pletcher, seconded by J.C. Rafferty, the commission approved the regular meeting minutes of April 26, 2012 with the following corrections. For your information, item number five meetings. Five to 2012 at 12:00 p.m., the Upsher County Senior Citizen, Senior Center Board was changed to five nine 2012. Judy McCauley of Appalachian Community Health Center Children's Clinical Outreach Representative appeared before the commission to review the National Children's Mental Health Awareness Day proclamation, which designates May 9, 2012, as National Children's Mental Health Awareness Day in Upsher County. The purpose of the proclamation is to increase awareness of the mental health needs of children, and the goal is prevention of future health and social problems. After discussion on motion by Creed Pletcher, seconded by J.C. Rafferty, the commission approved and authorized the commission to sign the proclamation. Joyce Harris Thacker, Upsher County Family Resource Network Director, distributed literature and ribbons to promote the occasion. After discussion on motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Creed Pletcher, the commission approved and authorized the president to sign the deed and all related documents concerning the property transfer of the Sand Run Community Building and property to the Upsher County Board of Education. After discussion on motion by Creed Pletcher, seconded by J.C. Rafferty, the commission approved to reauthorize creation of the Upsher County Farmland Protection Board and member appointments. This action was taken so that the board would be established as per code requirements. After discussion on motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Creed Pletcher, the commission approved the employment of Alicia D. Carr as part-time secretary for the office of the county commission. Effective date of employment is May 7, 2012, at the rate of $8 per hour. After discussion on motion by Creed Pletcher, seconded by J.C. Rafferty, the commission approved the appointment of J. Martin as board member of the Upsher County Development Authority to fill the unexpired term of Lance Miller, ending on June 30, 2013. After discussion on motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Creed Pletcher, the commission approved Amanda Laura Forrest as volunteer for the Lewis Upsher Animal Control Facility. The commission reviewed the following four-year information items. Number one, correspondence from the West Virginia County Commissioners Association concerning the "How Does My County Government Make Life Better for Me?" essay contest for 2012. Number two, correspondence from the state of West Virginia concerning appraisal racial results for Upsher County. Number three, home confinement report, March 2012. Number four, agendas and notice of meetings as listed. Number five, meeting minutes and financial reports as listed. Number six, meetings of boards as listed. The commission approved all invoices for payment. The commission approved all vacation orders. The commission approved the following settlements as listed. The commission approved the following dis条reparations and refunds as listed. The commission recessed at 10:00 a.m. Commission reconvened at 10:30 a.m. Jacob E. Rieger, Upsher County Prosecuting Attorney, appeared before the commission and advised that the hearing concerning the estate of Alma Marie Porter McCauley, deceased, was canceled due to a settlement agreement by all concerned parties. Joe Bennett, Addressing and Mapping Coordinator, appeared before the commission, providing an update status report on Derica Road address. Ms. Bennett advised that certain residents had made a complaint concerning addressing procedures. Ms. Bennett has followed up on the complaint and concluded that the correct addressing procedures were followed as outlined in the Upsher County E-911 Addressing and Mapping Ordinance, and advised that the subject address should remain as-is. Ms. Bennett provided a status report on the proposed Gary E. Bailey Boat Rim. The sign has been completed and delivered, and Ms. Bennett will follow up on contacting Mr. Bailey's relatives to set a date for dedication. Commission recessed at 11:00 a.m. The commission reconvened at 11:15 a.m. Dorinda Hall, E-911 Communications Center Dispatcher, appeared before the commission for an exit interview and requested an executive session for West Virginia Code 6-9A-4. At 11:15 a.m., on motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Creed Pletcher, the commission entered executive session. Present Were Donnie Tenny, Creed Pletcher, J.C. Rafferty, William Parker, and Dorinda Hall. No decisions were made in the executive session. The commission returned to open session at 10:50 a.m. The commission took no action on Ms. Hall's letter of resignation. The item will be on the agenda for possible action next week. The commission recessed at 12:30 p.m. The commission reconvened at 1:30 p.m. Steve Linger, E-911 Communications Center Director, appeared before the commission. Mr. Linger requested an executive session for West Virginia Code 6-9A-4 to discuss personnel issues. At 1:30 p.m., on motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Creed Pletcher, the commission entered executive session. Present Were Donnie Tenny, Creed Pletcher, J.C. Rafferty, William Parker, and Steve Linger. No decisions were made in the executive session. The commission returned to open session at 2:30 p.m. With no further business, on motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Creed Pletcher, the commission meeting adjourned at 2:35 p.m.
Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes as read? Not an ask for a motion to be approved as such?
Second.
On favor say aye.
Aye.
Same same sign.
Mr. President, cell phone went off during the reading of the minutes. I don't know if that should be fine.
I think it should just be noted in the minutes that the sheriff answered his cell phone during the reading of the minutes.
Disrupted the entire proceeding.
It was pertaining to the upcoming event.
Law enforcement responsibility?
That's right. This is there.
Morning. Is everyone?
I'm a Democratic.
Watch out.
You're Democrats, slide on that move.
Okay, well, it's proclamation time, Joyce. Peace Officers Memorial Day, if you'd like to step up.
Yes, and I understand that Doug Vincent, Vincent, maybe in Ralph with DNR.
Is that who you're talking to?
Jeff Craig.
Oh, Jeff Craig.
I don't know where Jeff's at.
Short memory.
U of I or something.
And Doug, I'm sorry, Jeff's come today with DNR. Okay. Could I ask that our officers, you know, come forward and stand behind?
You can ask anything you want to. I'm not sure if they'll oblige us, but I'm sure they probably will.
I will ask your permission, then I will ask if they would be willing to do that.
Air compliance, air commission and air compliance.
They check their weapons at the door.
I was going to say, see who I want to. Hey, man, you got to worry about Brian.
You want to call them to attention before you leave? Is that okay?
No, I just want to thank them for being here, and thank you all for the opportunity to be here as well, to participate in the proclamation of National Police Week. Generally, and hopefully I've had my moment already. I generally have a moment that I have to get through, you know, it's very emotional for me. And most of the time it happens during the reading of the proclamation or a poem that I choose to read afterwards, but hopefully I've had that already. I would like to say that the picture with the sign that you see in front there certainly is part of the bridge sign that passes over Route 33 coming into town, but at the time when we dedicated the bridge, I just received one of the small signs, and I gave that to, I had it framed and gave it to my daughter and my grandsons. And so, just recently, I was able to get additional signs, and my good friend Roger Marsh framed those and put David's picture in it, and it's just a beautiful rendering, and I wanted to bring that. Also, had asked that my daughter and my grandsons be here today. They are in school, of course, in Marion County, and my daughter's a teacher, and they're getting ready for a west test, and she said, "There's just no way that they could come down today." But I wanted to be able to present them with those, and I will do that at a later date, maybe on the anniversary of David's death, which is July the 11th. We may have something special then. Thanks for indulging me, as I wanted to be sure and say that. May 13 through the 19, 2012 Proclamation, National Police Week. Whereas the Congress and President of the United States has designated May 15 as Peace Officers Memorial Day, and the week in which May 15 falls is National Police Week. And whereas the members of our law enforcement agencies of Upsher County play an essential role in safeguarding our rights and freedoms. And whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of their law enforcement agencies, and that members of our law enforcement agencies recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression. And whereas the men and women of the law enforcement unceasingly provide a vital public service, and now therefore, we, the Upsher County Commission, do hereby call upon all citizens of Upsher County and upon all patriotic civic and educational organizations to observe the week of May 13 through the 19, 2012, as Police Week. With appropriate ceremonies and observances in which all of our people may join in commemorating law enforcement officers, past and present, who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities have rendered a dedicated service to their communities, and in so doing have established themselves an amiable and enduring reputation for preserving the rights and security of all citizens. We further call upon all citizens of Upsher County to observe May 15, 2012, as Peace Officers Memorial Day, in honor of those law enforcement officers who through their courageous deeds have made the ultimate sacrifice in service to their community, or who have become disabled in the performance of duty. And let us recognize and pay respect to the survivors of our fallen heroes. In witness thereof, we have here to set our hands and cast the seal of Upsher County to be affixed.
Do we have a motion to approve the proclamations read?
So moved.
On favor say aye.
Aye.
Same same sign. Motion carries.
Police Week, and thank you. The time has now come for this one week a year, when we all stop to think, when we all shed a tear, for all the heroes whose names grace the wall, and for all those heroes who still answer the call. Family and friends at the wall they will stand, with pictures, letters, and love in their hands. Left at the wall will be displays of their love, a tribute to those who now watch from above. They will think of the day their world was destroyed, a split second in time, causing such a great void. As they visit the wall, there will be great pain in their heart, but strangely it's there that the healing can start. As they stand there in all of this memorial stone, it is then that they realize that they are not alone. So many others with stories quite the same, so many more sharing each other's pain. Let us all stop and think what this week's all about. It's for those who sacrificed for us day in and day out. And for each name engraved by the stonecutter's knife, there are hundreds of people touched by that life. Although it's just a week, seven days from the year, it's a lifetime of anxiety, emotions, and fear. For most that will cease when the ceremony ends, but this week lasts forever for family and friends. Thank you all very much.
You want to come up and get your picture taken with me?
I do, and I have blue ribbons that I want to distribute, and I also want to, that's called our Fly the Blue campaign, so we encourage everybody to fly the ribbons on their car antennas. And also, you know, year-round, I have a blue light in my window. When you all pass my house, you'll see that. That is in honor of your service every day, and for those who have made the supreme sacrifice like David. So I have ribbons, and I also have certificates that I want to give each of the departments. And I have cops, that's Concerns Police Survivors, keyrings that I want to give to you all, and for each of your department members. And I would hope that, you know, we lose our officers, unfortunately, in different ways. In David's case, it was a car wreck and route to an alarm. And I hope that the keyring will, when your officers put it in their cruisers and they start those cars, that they will think about, you know, what they're doing, and think about coming home to their families, and as a reminder. And that is what I hope, that that will instill in the officers, so that if one little thought, you know, and we know that it's, there are circumstances beyond your control every day in your line of work, but sometimes there's, there is a little bit of control, and if you just maybe not go quite so fast, or whatever the case may be, but to make certain that you do everything that you can do in service to your community, without a doubt, but in service to your families, that you try to, everything you can do to make it back home to them, because it's a lifetime, a long lifetime, without them. But I want you all to know that we appreciate everything that you do every day, that you put on that badge, and you strap on that gun, and you go out and you serve each and every one of us. There's just no way to adequately thank you for what you do, but I'd like to at least try to do that today. Thank you.
Joyce, I think your comments are especially poignant, and why the recent events that occurred involving one of our Upsher County residents who serves as a state trooper. And I think that we should all, should all take heed and take your words, and that's...
Well, and yes, and you speak of Shannon Loudon, and Amanda is heading up an event where we're going to do a line of duty run on June 29. So you'll hear more about that, and we hope that all of the departments and everybody in this community will come together in support of him, and we're so thankful that he is still with us, and we pray for his continued improvement and to full recovery. And we know that it's really hard on the family as well, and his partners and his brothers who serve every day, you know, so yes, please come out and look for more information on that as well, as we support him and his work and his family.
Okay, we're back from our little recess. Our next scheduled appointment is at 10:30. We do have some other items to discuss. I see our sheriff's state. Did you want to talk to us, Burden?
Yes, you have one issue on the agenda.
Oh, okay, when we get to that, you just wave your hand or something.
Item three is what he would like to speak to you about.
Oh, okay.
When you get to there.
Okay, well, I'll let you know when we're there, okay? Item number one, approval of worthless check fund agreement with the administrative office of the courts of the state of West Virginia. Would you like to elaborate on that, Mr. Parker?
We have a, previously we had an agreement that was submitted, but the gentleman that was selected ended up not taking the position, but this is an agreement, standard agreement that worthless check fund can be utilized for employment of personnel. It becomes a county position at that point, but supervised by the circuit judge, and all the costs will be covered by the reimbursement of the worthless check fund, and there is more than sufficient funds to cover this position, and the agreement just outlines the responsibilities of each party is what the agreement does.
From what I sense, we're sort of a pass-through on that.
Yes.
A question I have, but I think I already know the answer, but is this a benefited position?
No, it is not.
I do not think so, thank you.
It's a part-time position for up to 35 hours a week at $10 an hour.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve this agreement?
Second.
On favor say aye.
Aye.
Same same sign. Motion carries. Approve employment of Jamie R. Queen, worthless check clerk at the rate of $10 per hour with an effective date of June 4, 2012.
That's the individual that'll be filling the position.
Okay. All right, do we have a motion to approve the employment of Mr. Queen?
So moved.
On favor say aye.
Aye.
Same same sign. Motion carries. Now, Burton, approve the order of recommendation for the removal of Carolyn Wilson Collins ExeTrick?
Execut...
Execut... Execut... Execut... The estate of Nellum Barnett Collins, deceased, and appoint, Burton, Mr. Sheriff of Upsher County, as personal representative. Right ahead, Burton.
I just want to make you aware, and I think it may impact this proceeding this morning, is I was in Circuit Court yesterday afternoon in front of Honorable Judge Cadel, Thomas There are two pending legal matters before the Circuit Court of this county in reference to this estate. They were, Brian Bailey was representing Mrs. Wilson Collins, and Mr. LaRoche was representing the plaintiffs, who was another family member. I believe Janet was, Collins was the name on that one. From what I gathered, listening to the motions Mr. Roche brought on, this entails quite a bit of issues in relations to this estate, and I mean, you may have, you gentlemen may have a different opinion than I do, but I believe right now, with the current two cases pending in the Circuit Court on the estate, I think we're kind of premature to appoint the sheriff. And actually, that issue was raised yesterday in the Circuit Court by Mr. Bailey, appointing the sheriff, and the circuit judge directed both of the attorneys into mediation, and part of that mediation was for them to see if they can find common ground to find a, someone to act as administrator of the estate other than the sheriff. And that was by the direction of the circuit judge. So I didn't think that you gentlemen were aware of that, and I felt that, like I say, we may be premature here this morning, I don't know, you can discuss that, but I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
Well, maybe we need to consider that, I don't know if the proper thing, this recommendation comes from, to do this, does it come from our county clerk? Where did that recommendation come from?
It comes from the judiciary commissioner through the office of the county clerk.
Okay. Well, do we have a, do we have a timeline when we were asked to do this, or just these are submitted to us, and then?
The office of the county clerk sent out notifications to all parties. I was unaware that there was court cases going on, and, you know, for that it would be considered today. You're not required to follow the recommendations, and you may talk to your county clerk later on and see.
In light of?
In light of, you know, I don't foresee it being any additional problems in her office than they already have.
Right. Okay, well, why don't we talk to our county clerk here in a little bit, and in light of the information the sheriff gave us, that based on the recommendation of the judge?
The mediation that he had ordered the parties into, I apologize, but I don't have a date, I don't know if they had a date yesterday, that who was going to be the mediator for that either.
Well, it sounds like the prudent thing to do is to talk to our county clerk and then make a decision.
Sounds like even if the sheriff's appointed, he's not going to be able to finalize anything.
Right.
Oh, no.
No, I'd say we just delay, delay action on this then until we get some more information and talk some more. Thanks, Burton.
Thank you.
Have a good one.
Okay, next item is approval of volunteer for Lewis Upsher Animal Control Facility of Samantha Michelle Cobb.
That is a student of West Virginia Wesleyan College.
Okay, motion approved.
We'll make that motion.
Second.
On favor say aye.
Aye.
Same same sign. Motion carries. Resignation, Anna...
Anastasia.
Anastasia. I'm going to practice on these names. Bean, Office of the, Anna.
That's Anna.
Anna. That's why. Office of the county clerk, effective date, May 11, 2012, and Linda Hardesty Child Visitation Center, effective date, April 19, 2012. Do we have a motion to accept these resignations?
Reluctantly.
Reluctantly.
Yeah. I move.
I'll second that.
Reluctant second.
She has Anastasia, Anna, who's busy, of course, election evening, manning her post there at the Electronic County Doubt.
Yep.
She's down for, I guess, a number of years.
Sure she'll be missed.
Services will be missed.
Right.
We hate to lose any good employee, but looks like she better herself for her own benefit.
Okay, on favor say aye.
Aye.
Same same sign. Motion carries. Approval of employment, Amanda Bachman, part-time clerk for James W. Curry Library at the rate of 725 per hour with an effective date of May 21, 2012.
She'll be filling in on an ads-needed basis, so we can control the hours of other personnel.
So how, do we have three now working that will be dividing the time up?
Actually, we have four part-time personnel up there right now.
In the library?
Yeah.
Do we still receive a list of the people that attend the library? Do they used to have a list?
I haven't, we go over that during the monthly meetings, but I'll, I don't know if she's prepared a list lately, I'll have to check, I just don't remember, or don't know.
Well, they probably would have time to do it, wouldn't they?
Should do.
They can find a moment during the busy day, and I think it'd be the same thing as far as the usage of the campground, I think it's been...
That'd be interesting, too.
About that, so maybe you could relay that to them, but if we could get that on a monthly basis, that would be good. Just so we know what's going on in that far-reaching end of the county. So, do we have a motion to approve Amanda Bachman, part-time?
I'll make that motion. Second.
On favor say aye.
Aye.
Same same sign. Motion carries. And we have Upsher County Youth Camp personnel on pages eight and nine.
There's 13 individuals listed, recommended for part-time employment. Do we require them to have criminal checks because they're working with youth?
Yes, if they have not worked there before, we'll do background checks on those, yes. Yes, if they have not worked there before, we'll do background checks on those, yes.
Okay, we have the list of the employees, so do we have a motion that we approve the employment of these individuals?
So moved.
I'll second.
On favor say aye?
Aye.
Both same side? Motion carries. Next item is review, joint employer status and related matters with Ryan Godey, Circuit Clerk.
We'll have to get a hold of Mr. Godey, and he's in and out of court today, so it'll be when we...
And we can catch him, and we will, we will meet with him on that matter. Okay, next, for your information, correspondence from Core Heart Refractories concerning notice of planned layoff pursuant to Section 7 of Workers Adjustment and Retraining Notification They're planning a layoff of, it would be 60-some workers, wasn't it?
69.
69 workers. Mass, notice of mass layoff, effective July 6, 2012. So this is a requirement, if it reaches a certain percentage level, and is any company like Core Hearts that has, depends on orders, when the orders drop down, then the employment drops down. They've had some, the last two or three years, some good years, so hopefully this will be temporary.
But we speak to, we're not determining the year.
Right.
Hopefully that...
Yeah, and I think they're anticipating things to pick back up next year, so since it's a worldwide company, that's good as far as the market. Copy of correspondence from Virgil Miller to Debbie Wolfong, concerning the state of Alice Summers, deceased. So I'm sure that those two will get that little issue worked out, and that is what we have on the agenda until our 10:30 appointment, unless you gentlemen have something. You got something, Willie?
Two or three items, just to note, the Upsher County Farmland Protection Board meeting is the 24th, it's at a 4 o'clock instead of the normal 6 o'clock time, it'll be a 4 o'clock, we have a representative from the State Farmland Protection Board that'll be attending, so if you gentlemen would desire to attend, along with the board members, if you have any specific questions, but Lavanda Hayden with the State Farmland Protection Board is scheduled to be here that day. We have the fifth Thursday meeting coming up on the 31st, the joint meeting with the city. If you have topics that you would like to have on the agenda, just let me know, and I can get a list of topics developed.
Have you made contact with them, if they're...
I've sent an email to them, I have not followed up on that email yet, but I have sent an email to the city, to Michael Dawson, Teresa Summers.
I imagine they'll be, the newspapers saw the people that were really interested in seeing it happen, will be notified, so everybody will be happy.
Yep, yeah, just as a, also one item, that we had a call from the Office of the Secretary of State concerning the processing of our ballots on election night. I didn't, I didn't see it myself, and I don't know if, but there was a report, and I was just to bring it out for you gentlemen, or anybody that was there, a report that a candidate was behind the counter-handling ballots or election materials election night. I did not see anybody back there at all. Of course, I didn't, wasn't out areas at all times, but I didn't know if you gentlemen saw any candidate outside the public area that you're aware of.
No, I didn't, I did not.
I didn't see any.
It wasn't me, I wasn't present. I wasn't great.
But it was, so supposedly they saw it on Channel 12 or 5, and I do know we had some media representatives that went back and took a shot the other direction, so maybe they were confused of, yeah, I do know we had, you know, that, but...
Talking the main lobby area where the machinery, kind of, do not recall seeing any, other than...
I'm 99.99% certain of anything, but, but I thought I would follow up.
But someone called the Secretary of State's office...
Someone made a complaint to the Secretary of State's office.
Based on what they saw on TV?
Yes, and, or what they saw, supposedly saw here and on TV, but...
We can discuss that also with the county clerk.
I have, and she's asked, you know, individuals from the press to stop by to see if there's anything, you know, that they, you know, have or would notice, but to my knowledge, nothing like that transpired at all.
I didn't see it, so, okay. Anything else?
No, we have some paperwork to take care of.
Okay, well, we'll start on our paperwork until our 10:30 appointment, then.